Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us for the July 18th, 2023 Historic Zoning Commission meeting. First, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. All of those in favor of calling the meeting to order say aye.
Aye.
I'm nigg. Okay, as you all see, there's a new item. Item number two is public comments. The legislator has passed a new bill that states that we must hold a public comments session at the beginning of all public meetings. These would be to discuss items on the agenda for the new business items. They, the applicants or the individuals that would like to speak will have to contact the city of Murfreesboro through our website at least six hours prior to a meeting and sign up to speak. They will have three minutes to speak on the item. If the chairman decides at that time that they need more time, they can give them more time. Today, we do not have anyone who asked to speak at this public meeting, so we will go on to the next item, which is election of officers for the 2023-24 year. And do I have a nomination for a chairman?
Before, can you, can you refresh our memory of who the people are and their position?
Bill Jakes is the current chairman, and Jeff Davis is the current co-chairman. Do we have a nomination for chairman?
Can we do them together, or do we have to do them separately?
I think we should do them separately.
I make a motion that we stay with our current chair.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing there are none, that Bill Jakes will be our chair for the 2023-24 election.
I think we needed a second for that motion.
Second.
And then discussion.
And no discussion.
And no discussion. Thank you, Matthew. Next will be for the co-chair for the 2023 season.
I make a motion to stay with our current co-chair.
Current co-chair, current co-chair nominated in second to be Jeff Davis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I will turn the meeting over to our vice chair due to Bill Jakes not being able to be here today.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and I'll try to live up to your expectations.
High standards.
Next item, we need to approve the minutes of our March 21st meeting. Does anybody have any amendments, any changes to those? Okay, would somebody make a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion, will you approve as submitted?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Going on to new business, we have an application H-23-008-137, Cherry Lane, John and Peggy Taylor. Taylors are requesting review for a driveway gate with fencing shutters at an existing single-family residence. Amelia, staff comments?
Thank you. This property is located on the west side of Cherry Lane, several lots to the south of East Lidle Street and north of East Main Street. The brick Tudor-style one-and-a-half-story single-family house was constructed in this timeframe of 1940. The property contains approximately .3 acres and is zoned RS-10 and is in the Historic Overlay District as well as the CCO District. Properties to the north and south and west of the subject property are RS-10. Properties to the east are RS-15. The applicant wishes to install a five-foot aluminum fence along the north and south, north and rear property lines and attach to the neighbor's existing fence on the southern side of the property. As you can see, he wants to install the fence behind the addition on the north side of the house at the back part of his driveway, and then it would connect along the northern line and the western line, and then connect to the existing property owner, neighbor's property fence to the south. The fencing style is an aluminum decorative-style fencing. As I said, it may be five foot tall, and talking to the applicant, it's possible it may be a little over like four-and-a-half feet tall. There will also be a decorative gate along the driveway section of the property. Portion of the fence will be visible from right away at Cherry Lane. The style of aluminum gate fencing the wish, applicant wishes to erect is included in all of your agenda materials as well. There are several aluminum gates and fencing within the vicinity, and the design guidelines for the historical district state that fences may be added to a lot if they are similar to other fences in the area. The applicant originally decide, thought about installing shutters. I mean, he originally thought he might not install shutters, but when the shutters were removed from the house, he noticed that there was some damage done to the brick. So he has since decided that he would like to put shutters back on the home as it was prior to his remodeling. He originally was going to do vinyl shutters, but has since changed his mind and has decided, see if I can get the picture to you all of what he's proposing. It is, well, I gave you a handout of what he's proposing. So if you could look at that, he is now proposing to do some handmade wooden shutters that would conform with the Murfreesboro City guidelines, historic district guidelines. Generally, what is stated, a variation of materials are within the historic district, but there is a general consistency of building materials that are prominently wood, brick, and stucco. So the applicant, Mr. James Taylor, is here in attendance today. He's actually the son of the applicant. He's going to be his representative in order to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we'll open up discussion on the gate first, and I'll turn it-
Fence and the gate.
Yes, fence and the gate, and so I'll turn it over to the commission. Questions, comments?
Amelia, can you put on the screen for those out in TV land to see, there's like three or four different gates, so I can't tell which one you're asking for.
Sure, make it back to that.
Okay, there's, is it the top one, or is it one of the, one of those at the bottom?
No, it'd be the top, the larger picture, and a double gate.
Is it going to be electrified to where it can open with push a button?
It's not going to be electric at this time.
Oh, you're going to regret that.
Well, maybe down the road, but we'll have to come back and visit that.
You can always add that.
I was curious as what the fence, the existing fence was made of on the south side of the property.
It is chain link fence.
Chain link?
Chain link.
And that's your neighbor's?
It is.
And I did look back through GIS, the best that I could tell, it's been there for quite some time, and it does have a lot of vegetation grown on it, so you really can't even see that there's a fence there. I tried to get a picture of it, but it would not have shown.
Mr. Taylor, I'm turned around a little bit. Front elevation of the house, the gate's going to be on the right or the left?
Basically, it'd be on the right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So it sounded like the height has not been decided, like five and a half, five?
It's not going to be five feet. The tallest it would be is four and a half feet, but most likely four feet.
Forgive me, it's none of my business, but is it for children or dogs or?
For my dog.
Dog, okay.
Will it match in height the existing fence that's there, or will it be, will there be a discrepancy?
The chain link fence is four feet.
So it'll be the same?
Correct.
I'm going to put this out there for discussion. I don't know that I like the idea of having a chain link fence up against a newer style or aluminum style fence. I'm not sure if that's cohesive.
We're not allowed to add a chain link fence.
I realize, I would, I would more like to see the new fence gone all the way down the side as opposed to connecting to an existing chain link fence for, again, a cohesive look.
Okay.
But you don't own that.
I don't own that.
Chain link is owned by the neighbor.
I realize, but he could still put a fence on the inside of that.
In front of a fence.
Pardon?
A fence in front of a fence.
Yeah, I agree, it's not ideal, but I just don't know that I personally like the idea of a historical-looking home with a chain link fence abutted to a, a new fence that's going to, I'm sure, look very nice. That would be my only qualm.
Amelia, is that visible from the right away, the existing fence?
If it were not covered in vegetation, it would be visible.
Just in the winter time, when you can see it.
I, I don't, I don't even know it has so much overgrowth on it that you would see it in the winter time.
Does it just stop, or, or is it connected to the house? I can't tell.
There's just a very small distance between the chain link fence and his home. There will be, I just didn't have a place to draw that with our GIS the way the picture is.
Put his-
There would be a section.
His black fence.
His black fence on the left side of his home.
That would help.
With this discussion in mind, can you tell us, the black seems to override green, the green, I'm guessing, is existing fence and the black is new, is that correct?
Is that on the picture?
Yeah.
Can you put it on the overhead for us, please?
It should be the property line.
I think it's the-
The green line is the property line. The existing fence is along the south, yeah, the south property line.
Green is property lines, it's not a fence.
Yeah.
That is not a fence, that is the property line.
There will not be a fence right there.
And the chain link just stops there?
Yes, ma'am.
So you see where his garage is on the south side?
Yeah.
It actually kind of, his is farther back. It, it's hard to see from that picture because they have a pool, so it is, if I could go up there, I could show it to you.
You can go up there.
Wish we had a laser pointer.
I wished we did.
Okay, so you see the two cars on the south side?
Yes.
And his garage right there?
Yes.
That chain link fence actually goes to the back of that garage, so there will be a good section of my black fence that will be visible before, so it's, if that, if that helps.
So I want to make sure I understand correctly.
Right here.
Aluminum fence, chain link fence, then the corner where the fences meet up?
Be aluminum all the way to the back of his garage. That's where fence turns in to connect for the, so they have full enclosure for their pool. So, okay.
So he's saying that it, it ends right here, and his fence would go here and then back in. I apologize, I'm going by what I was given. And as I said, you can't see back there at the current time.
So the chain link stops at your neighbor's garage?
Correct.
Back, the back corner.
The back corner.
And then goes to the back of the property line and stops, or turns, I suppose.
Turns, so it's fully-
Turns south-
Correct.
To enclose the pool for insurance purposes.
Right.
Like there, it stops there then instead of looking.
And it goes, it goes this way. I don't know where it ties into the house, but it encloses the backyard, so the kids can-
Any further discussion, questions?
Well, I guess, you know, listening to Chase's point, I don't know that we, we would gain much by continuing the aluminum, new aluminum fence right beside the existing fence.
It would pose a, I mean, we have two fences like that together, the vegetation's just going to fill in, it's going to be a nightmare to maintain. If, you know, because it's probably Virginia creeper and, you know, a couple of other vines, grapevines, and I've got them on my back fence, and I, I love them, but I wouldn't want to have two fences to have to try to clear them out.
I suspect this will probably one day lead to that chain link being replaced by-
I would say so.
Eventually, I think, you know, a little incremental.
A new neighbor who would want to make it look better than chain link, but you still need to finish enclosing the property for your dog-
Right.
From that rear corner, the north, northwest corner of the neighbor's garage up to your house, that's, that's going to be open if we leave it.
I think he was-
No, I follow.
That's where the fence is going.
Yeah.
Then you, and I get it, but I'm saying if you didn't do it to-
Right.
Not have a double fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only concern, I mean, I'm, I'm not against it per se, I just think it's going to look a little piecemeal.
Okay, any further discussion, question? The chair would welcome a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Gibb, a second by Debra. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now the shutters. Procedurely, am I in line, Amelia?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, the gate is included with the fencing because they're just the same style.
Okay, the, the move to discuss the shutters now, so I'll throw it out to the commission. Questions, comments?
When the house was, how long ago was the house bought?
My parents bought that in, gosh, I'm not sure when they-
2012, I believe.
Okay, 2012.
And the shutters were on it at that point?
Yes.
And when they were removed, did you get approval to remove them?
We did not.
It was part of the new windows repair, I presume, wasn't it?
You know, I, they were vinyl and real, just in such horrible shape, they just kind of came off in pieces, so.
Can't really tell the brick damage that-
Can you describe the brick damage? All I could see was-
It's just like white scuff behind it.
Probably just needs powder wash.
We've done that.
Okay. I noticed there was some paint. If you go to the next picture, I think it shows without.
Yes, and if I, I used to, if I could zoom in, I'm not sure how to get this picture to zoom in.
Mr. Thompson, in your opinion, would that weather over time and?
It's, it's just that, I think the brick that wasn't covered by shutters is probably dirtier, or you can see that pair of windows to the right where she's got her hand there, the cursor, it looks darker. The thing is, is that that style house typically never had shutters, and even with the vinyl shutters, they probably, vinyl, they didn't, they didn't operate, they didn't close. And are you proposing wood, you're proposing wooden shutters now?
Yes.
And are there going to be the little single one-leaf shutter on each end of the pairs of windows?
They're 18 inches.
Are the windows 18 inches?
No, they're not.
They're three O's.
So when you, if you, the hardware shown on this handout appears to be operable.
Correct.
So if, if, if they're operable and they are closed, they're never going to meet?
They will not fully cover, no.
Yeah, that's always, and from an architectural standpoint, just a huge gotcha for me. I mean, the house probably never had them, and somebody came along and put shutters on them, probably the vinyl ones.
Right.
And it, it, it doesn't really belong.
It's such a beautiful home that that Tudor-style, without the shutters.
I agree.
Would a plank, a batting board?
It just wouldn't have had shutters. These are typicals that I'm talking about. There's always an oddball that does those kind of things, but typically, you just simply wouldn't.
Sounds good.
So what you're saying, Mr. Thompson, is that putting shutters up would take away from the Tudor-style home?
If, if I were asked to make a motion, I would say to deny the request to put shutters up.
Would you be willing to not put the shutters? I mean, is that a, are you really set on the idea of shutters?
I, we were, but if it's not approved, then it's not approved. We can revisit this later.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor, is there another option other than pressure washing? Is there, did you acid wash?
They did an acid wash, and they have pressure washed it.
Photograph doesn't really show the damage, so we can't see it right here, you know?
Well, I drove by it again today, and I didn't notice the damage. I mean, don't have such a critical eye that you have as the owner.
It's just a scuff, like it's just scuffed where something has rubbed over time, perhaps.
Do we have a, this might be a question for Roman. Do we, can we defer something, say for a year?
We have before.
And, and not charge Mr. Taylor another Tudor's fee to come back before us? I'd like to think this might weather over, over the course of, and, and, I don't know, I just thought I would.
How long ago did you remove the shutters?
Probably six months ago, and that's because they were literally not even really attached anymore. They were just kind of, excuse me, just kind of hanging like from the top.
Do we have that option, Roman?
I'm looking in the rules right now to see if there's a time limit on how long you can defer, but I believe, I believe you can defer.
We have before.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to work with us on that? It's such a beautiful home, and without the shutters, if there was another option to mitigate the damage of camouflage, whatever the proper word might be?
You might could put the money in, instead of shutters, putting into landscaping in front, and that might help a good bit.
Well, yes, it's got to be completely landscaped, all that's going to be ripped out.
I only see like three bushes or four bushes, and to the left side, I see a moss growing or algae growing because of the overhang of the tree. I mean, my thought would be to put the money into landscaping and hold off on the shutters and see if you need it. I'm always in favor of applying a little small step and then add to it till you get to saturation and then stopping, but I, I wouldn't put them on there.
Okay. I still feel like I should entertain any motion.
Yes, to do a deferral, I believe the proper avenue would be-
No, entertain a motion to approve as requested, if there is such a motion made.
Yes, yeah, the-
We owe him a vote.
Yeah, since the item is before the commission, the commission can take whatever measures they deem appropriate, whether it's a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to defer after the-
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Do I have a motion to approve as submitted?
To defer.
Having none? Do I have a motion to defer? For a year?
I move that we defer for a year to give it time.
Second.
Have a second. David, Debra.
But, but, but further discussion, does it mean that when you come back, that we're going to approve it then? Just, just to be clear.
Okay.
It could be rejected.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Mr. Taylor, do you have any questions for the commission?
I do not.
I mean, we're, we're-
We need a vote on the deferment.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of deferring for a year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All right, y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any, I think that's all on the new business. Any staff reports, Amelia, other business?
I could give you all a quick update. The city did hire a consultant to do a new historical district study, go through and take photos of all of the properties that are within the downtown East Main Historic District. Those have all been submitted into the state for review, and once that is published, they now have everything online that you can look it up. When that does come back, that everything has been approved, I will send you an email, unless we have a new meeting, before I get back to that, and I will give you that link to be able to go in and look at those properties.
Was there a boundary extension proposed?
There was not a boundary, there was not one proposed at this time. We had a lot of homes that were already in the existing, that were not contributing structures, that will now be contributing structures.
Age of 50 years are now contributing, so that would just-
So we're updating to get all of the new information, what's been added, all the changes that have been made, and get everything up to date.
Who was the consultant?
Robert Lewis.
Oh. Does that mean also that the National Register nomination is going to be updated?
Not necessarily.
Probably not, yeah, okay.
I don't think so.
I'm on the state review board for nominations, and we get updates all the time, but it has to be formally updated.
Right.
And just to do this internally or for the city doesn't automatically-
Oh, yeah, so the, it's, it's a much more stringent process. The National Register nomination is far-
Time frame, yeah.
Yeah, far more stringent and, and with, with much more detail about every structure.
And I think if we're having, if we're adding more structures that are 50 years or less, is that, or between 50 and whatever, maybe the rules that we follow for those may be less stringent than the Victorians that we have in our district, so that's something we need to be very much aware of. I think like a Gale, whatever, is it Cherry Lane, Gale Lane?
Cherry Lane.
Cherry Lane, sort of let them do other things and are not being held, forced to uphold the regulations because they're newer structures.
Mm-hmm.
We've done that before.
But that's great news. I hope we can eventually do more neighborhoods too. We've got a lot of neighborhoods that are not within a district.
It was a big endeavor just to get the, this particular one done.
And in addition, you know, the Manny Avenue is a National Registered District as well, but it's not a city historic district.
Correct.
And Manny Avenue is changing dramatically. That whole block that Dr. Tolbert owned is going to get four new single-family houses and seven townhouses. And the townhouses will be on Lee Street, the four single-family houses will be facing Manny.
Where is that?
Do you know on Manny Avenue where the Crying Cat Bookstore is? If you, that, just beyond it, north, north of the Crying Cat Bookstore, there'll be four new single-family houses.
Think we need to move to adjourn now? Do I have a motion?
Let's have a move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.